Good evening, Williamsburg County citizens. We will start in approximately two minutes. Two minutes we will start. Meanwhile, can we get a sound check for social media and a sound check on our teleconference line? Also remember, citizens can dial in at 877-309-2073. Access code is 590-380-589. Again, you can call in on the conference call line. And also, we are open to the public with a maximum of 10 people in chambers due to the fact that we have taken precautionary measures at this time. If any council member would like to remove their face covers, they are welcome to do Sound check, social media.
No social media, nobody on the conference line.
All right, thank you. Thank you, members of council. And again, hello to Williamsburg County citizens. Let me go ahead and call this meeting to order from March 1st, 2021. Invocation will be delivered by Councilwoman Hammond.
To God, we thank you that we have gathered here safely today. We ask that you bless everyone within this county, God, that you bless this meeting, that you bless the minds who are in charge of governing this county, that we make the best decisions possible, God. We ask that you continue to bless and render grace unto us. We thank you in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes. We need a motion for approval of the minutes for the February 16th, 2021, meeting.
So move, Madam Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Ordinances, we are going to skip over or third reading for ordinance number 202021-01 until we get further information. We have nothing for second reading. First reading, title only. Fee-in-lie ordinance, title only again, ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and Project Hemingway, providing for a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. First reading only. All I need is a motion and a second for it. For first reading.
Motion for first reading. Back it.
Next order of business is first reading for title only again for multi-county park ordinance, ordinance authorizing the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Florence County such industrial business park to be initially located in Williamsburg County and established pursuant to the section and code number listed in the ordinance as amended to provide for a written agreement with Florence County to provide for the expenses of the park, the percentage of the revenue application, and the distribution of the fee in lieu and ad valerian taxation and other matters related thereto Project Hemingway. Pleasure of council. We need a motion for first reading, title only.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Second.
Next on our order of business, we have first reading again, title only, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 2015-007, imposing a service fee to be known as a water availability fee to the collection from all non-users of Williamsburg County Water and Sewer Authority System, which is available to both occupied businesses and residential property owners in Williamsburg County, to provide that a fee will be charged each affected property owner by adding the sum of, and when that is determined, whatever option council decides to make on that to the existing fee of $180, which is the current fee totaling out their amount, whatever that is that they choose the option for, to the annual property tax notice commencing the tax year of 2021, and further providing that here and after, any amendments to the water availability fee shall be made by resolution of Williamsburg County Council. At this time, we do have our representative here with the Water Department, as well as our county attorney. We also have and can have our financial advisor, Mr. Larry Finney, who developed the options on the phone. This time, Mr. Jenkinson, do you have anything you want to add or explain to council?
I have nothing at this time, but I might have maybe some questions. But I really defer this to Mr. Finney and the financial issue, because this is not much of a legal decision, but a financial decision. It has great impact on the investment.
Great. So I will get him online as well, so that he can, before you all, so that we all can make an informed decision as to what direction you all want to go in. Mr. Finney? Okay, hold on, I'm going to put you on speakerphone. We have started the official council meeting. Mr. Finney, say something.
Hello, everybody?
Okay, can you just go over the fees again and kind of talk to them about it? You have received all your information. I just want to make sure they have a clear understanding of how it works.
Yes, let me just pull it up here real quick. So, you know, essentially, before we talk about the additions of the debt due to the three major projects, as well as a small increase related to getting our fund, our net asset, our cash balance where it needs to be, the county rates are such that there is an average customer bill of about $37 a month and a water availability fee of $180 a year. The three projects we're talking about, if you combine them, would take our water customers of about 2,800 and increase it about 620, and about 2,000 that are paying the water availability fee and increase it about 530. The other issue that I also wanted to mention that really relates to the rate increases we're talking about is that the county has not increased the water rates since 2011. And so, the purpose of the water rate analysis that we did was to look at increasing the rate slightly in order to get our cash balance where it needs to be, which is about 100 different of annual operating expenses, and then to look at the debt service that was going to be required because of the three projects. And that additional debt service we looked at was moving towards a 40-years and 2% interest rates. So the result of all that is that what we looked at doing is we looked at different options. We looked at increasing the water rate more, increasing the water availability fee more, or how we could essentially split the increase between the two. And so, the recommendation that we're making is that the water availability fee would go up about $100 a year, which is a 56% increase, and the water rate would go up about $14 a month, which is a 52% increase. And basically, those increases are necessary in order to cover the debt service from the three projects, to make up for the fact that it's been almost 11 years since the rates, the water rate had been increased, and then also to get our cash balance to approximately 100 days, which is kind of the minimum goal or the minimum acceptable level that we typically see with utility funds. Then the second part of our recommendation relates to, hopefully, if we can put into practice regular water rate increases, we won't have to be in a position to where we would have to do something like this again. And so, our second recommendation is that beginning July 1st of 2022, so a little over a year from now, that we, that the county would look at increasing its water rates, sewer rates, and availability fees based on an inflation factor. And the inflation factor we'd recommend using is the CPI or the Consumer Price Index for the Southeast for all items, which is an easy number to obtain. And if we can do those water rate increases on an annual basis, it should allow the county to not have to look at doing the kind of increases that we're having to talk about now because of these projects and just kind of catch up. So that's kind of the summary.
Okay, I'm going to leave you on just for a moment, just in case they have any questions and to basically explain what we mean by the debt. That means we've already taken the debt out on these projects. Is that correct? There, Mr. Finney?
Yes. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, we've already taken the debt out on these projects. You signed Mouson Water Project already, so there's now a debt on that, as well as the trial, the finishing touches of the trial project. We already have that debt out.
Correct. The annual debt service on the Mouson Project is about $141,000. Annual debt service on the trial project is about $280,000. And that's the annual debt service estimated response.
Madam Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
My question would be, I understand that the rates have to increase. Looking at these numbers, is there any way that we can increase them over time until we get where we need to be? Or is this something that we have to do immediately?
Okay, if I heard that question, the question was involving, can we do that over time? And the problem we have with doing it over time is we are already going to be making these annual debt service requirements. And so, the debt has to be paid. And so, if we don't do these rate increases, we're not going to end up being able to make our debt payments. And we, obviously, the county does not want to default on the debt payments, because there's all kinds of negative consequences surrounding that.
So, for instance, your recommendation is the $100 increased water availability fee and the $14 increase. And there's no way at this particular time we could play with those numbers to help our citizens along until we're able to get where we need to be?
So, Dr. Wright, if I'm here all night, can you repeat that for me?
He says, so there is no, Councilman Wilson asked, there's no way that we could play with the numbers so that it's not as a large impact on the citizens? Is that what you stated?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so the problem with that is that the county is already tied into that debt, so it doesn't really give the county any flexibility, unfortunately. If the projects, and the other thing is, the debt is already over, the terms of the debt is already about the maximum number of years that you would want to go. So there really isn't an option to lower the annual debt service payments, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Finney. From what I'm hearing you say, so if we were to not go along with that recommendation, we would be in default. And both those projects, as well as any other things, any other debt that we have tied into this increase would be at a standstill or would be DOE.
That's correct. If we don't increase these rates, and obviously, we don't make our debt payments, there's nothing but negative consequences that come from that. And obviously, that also means we wouldn't be able to issue any more debt either. So that's correct.
Right. And I understand what we are saying and what we are doing and what we have done and what we did not do in the past. It seems like we kind of, and I'm including myself, kind of kicked the can along the road and did not increase these rates for years and years and years. And when it caught up with you, then it looks bad. But sometimes, I think you have to just make tough decisions. And this is where we are right now. We're here. And we either got to do it, or either don't do it. But if we don't do it, and you said there are so many negative repercussions, it wouldn't be good. And I don't think those rates increase is so astronomically high that people could not afford to pay them. I don't want to increase it either, because I know some of the citizens probably, it would be maybe a little burden on some of them. But at this point, what do we have? We have our, we're between a rock and a hard place. And we have to come out somehow, and hope is to the betterment of the county and not the detriment. And so, certainly, I understand what you're saying, and I share the sentiments with Mr. Councilman Wilson. But at this point, we already indebted ourselves, and we got to come out somehow. And I think that's one of the only options we have if we're going to not default.
That's correct. And then, you know, another way to look at it is because we have not increased rates for 10 years, in essence, people have not been paying higher rates than they should have been for the last 10 years. And so, now it's just time to catch up and start paying those higher amounts.
I have a question. And when did you say, if we agreed to this, the higher amounts, when would this begin?
It really needs to begin ASAP. The debt's already been incurred, and so, it's sooner, the sooner that council can take action and implement the fees and the higher fees and rates, that's what we need to do.
And then my other question...
I'm not sure all the, I'm not sure what has to happen, you know, as far as meetings and approval before rates can go into effect.
My other question, Mr. Finney, and maybe, I don't know if I need to pose it to council, but someone inquiring, if they did not want county water, do they still have to pay the availability fees?
Right.
So the answer is yes. And is that because they live in that area where the water is coming? Okay.
Any other questions while we have our financial advisor on the phone?
Mr. Finney, Sam Floyd, you said the goal was to get 100 days out. How many days out are we now at a current rate? And what would the projection be, say, for example, if we went up $7, $10 versus 14 for this year and then got to 14 the following year? How would that affect?
Okay, so, as of June 30th, 2019, which is the last audit that was done, we were at 69 days. So, when you look at the rate increase of $14, only a certain of that $14 is helping to get to the 100 days. And we're actually only, we're doing that over a five-year period, so we're very slowly going from 69 to 100 days. So all of the increase in both the water rate and the water availability fee is because of the debt service requirements on these projects. So unfortunately, to address your other question, I, going from, if we did a rate increase to seven and then to 14 the next year, that's not going to help us be able to pay off our debt the way we need to.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have another question. Councilwoman Sue Ham. Mr. Finney, so with the $14 increase recommendation immediately, what would we increase the rates to the next year? Is that something that council would decide on, or are we looking at a percentage?
Yeah. So my recommendation would be that council actually put a practice in place or policy, whatever you want to call it, where you would do an annual increase effective every July 1st that would be based upon the Southeast Consumer Price Index. So in essence, all that's doing is making sure that your water rates are going up with inflation. Your costs are going up whether you increase the rates or not. And so, by having your rates go up annually based upon inflation factor, that just allows your rates to keep up with what's happening with your costs.
Mr. Finney, Councilman Wilson, do you know on hand what those rates have in, those rates from that, that tool have been over maybe the last two or three years offhand?
They have generally been in the 2% to 3% range. At one, for one time period, I looked, it was a little bit lower than that, but generally, that factor on an annual basis has been 2% to 3%.
Any other questions, members of council?
Mr. Finney, you did say that increase would be predicated upon the inflation, right?
Yes, yes. The Southeast Consumer Price Index is basically an inflation factor. That's correct.
Hearing that. Okay, Mr. Finney, thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, bye-bye.
I have a question for Mr. Lane. How many persons do we have now that have issues with their bills currently with the amount of persons that we have on the water system? Meaning, they default on their water bill or whatever the case is?
We have, on average, about 100 customers per month that are cut off.
Is it on?
Hello? Hello?
To the podium then. If it's not coming through, just walk up to the podium.
I can hear you.
That should be on.
Hello? Yes. Did you hear that, or I need to repeat?
Yeah, just repeat it again.
On average, we have about 100 customers that get cut off each month for non-payment. And eventually, they'll pay the bill in full and get reconnected.
And that's out of the 2,000-some-odd customers?
Oh, about 2,800 customers now.
2,800.
Yeah.
Mr. Lane, just a question. What's the status, if you can tell me now, with the trial project? And when would they be up and ready to go? Do you have any idea?
Well, unfortunately, and as y'all all know, we've had a lot of rain lately. And that project is about two months behind. It was supposed to be finished, I think, January 21st. So we're looking, hopefully, by the end of March, that we'll have it finished up. I think we'll have some customers connected before then.
Thank you.
Because they've already started the testing of the lines and all that.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, members of council? First reading, title only. We don't have to insert an amount at this point for this one, but you all have gotten, hopefully, gotten enough information to be able to make an informed decision. So we're going to go ahead and do first reading, title only for ordinance amending. I already went through that. We just need a motion for first reading, title only.
So moved, first reading.
Second.
Thank you. The next one is first reading, title only, and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and Project Foreston, providing for the issuance of a special source revenue credit and other matters related thereto. First reading, title only. We need a motion for first reading.
So moved.
The next order is first reading, title only again for ordinance authorizing the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Florence County, South Carolina, such industrial park to be initially located in Williamsburg County and established pursuant to the sections and code identified in the ordinance as amended to provide for a written agreement with Florence County to provide for an expense of the park, the percentage of revenue application, and the distribution of a fee in lieu, fee in lieu of ad valerian taxation and other matters related thereto.
Motion for first reading.
Motion for first reading, Madam Chair.
Back it.
Order of business is the resolutions. Resolution number 202021-01, an inducement resolution providing for a fee in lieu of tax agreement between Williamsburg County and Project Hemingway. The pleasure of council.
Madam Supervisor, can I get some explanation? Exactly what is that?
At this point, we cannot release the information pertaining to the company, but I can talk to you guys about that.
Okay.
Off-air, and once a confidentiality agreement has been signed by all members of council.
So moved, Madam Supervisor.
Back it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval for the resolution number 202021, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. The next order of business is resolution number 2021-02. Williamsburg County ordinance contained in section of chapter 3, article division 7 of Williamsburg County Code, Williamsburg County Water and Sewer Authority establishes certain rates for customers in Williamsburg County and other matters related thereto. And the original ordinance referred to the above was amended by ordinance number 2028-11 on the second day of July 2008. Section 3, therefore, which provides that any amendment to the exhibit, including service connection fees, cash deposit, NSF checks, casual users or construction, water and reconnection charges, or any charges, shall be made by resolution of Williamsburg County Council. Williamsburg County Water and Sewer Department desires to increase the monthly customer water rate by, and that will have to, you will have to determine what that will be, and it will also have to be included in the motion.
Motion to approve and adopt that resolution, Madam Chair.
For what?
The...
$14 increase.
$14 increase, and the, that also includes the...
No.
Okay, $14 increase then.
A second?
Second. Wait, wasn't that...
Go ahead.
Based on which one of these we pick? This resolution does not include Mr. Finney's recommendation for the annual...
Availability fee.
Availability, right.
My question is, do we want to include Mr. Finney's recommendation that we look at this annually and consider increasing it by the Consumer Price Index as he recommended?
Right.
And make it automatic every year that we'd report what it is? If that recommendation should be included in the resolution, if that's what you want to do. But if you don't want to do that, then you can leave it out. I just, he had made that recommendation to avoid the problem that we're in right now.
Right.
Because we did not have the annual review for the last 10 years. If we had had that amount added back in, we wouldn't be having this discussion. And what he's trying to do is, now, you can change it. This is a resolution. You're not, I ain't glad to it, but my thought is, he's trying to fix a problem, and part of the problem, one half of the problem is not addressing it annually, because if we did, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So my question would be, do you want to consider that or not? If you don't want to consider it, leave it like it is. But it would need to be amended to adopt the resolution, the recommendation of Mr. Finney for the annual increase by the CPI.
Well, word it, Billy, and then I'll motion.
And my question is, though, shouldn't we, and I'm asking, shouldn't we do this at the same time we do the water availability fee? Because his recommendation, if the availability fee is $50, then we go to 1663. If we decide on availability fee of 100, then we go to 14. If we decide on availability of 160, we go to 983. We're only on first reading of the water availability fee... We're only on first reading of the water availability fee. Wouldn't it make sense to pass this resolution at the same time we pass third reading of the water availability fee so that they coincide with his recommendations? You understand what I'm saying? He's given us presentations of if you do so much availability, then you need to do so much in increase in the water usage fee.
That would be...
So if we decide on 14 tonight, then we automatically lock it into 100 at first reading versus waiting to third reading.
No, this is not. Let's understand. One is a resolution and one is an ordinance. And here's how that happened. In 2008, when we adopted the water rate ordinance, we have a provision in that ordinance which says by resolution, you can increase it. The resolution only has one reading. And the reason that was put in, to make it easy to revisit it, okay? So that's why that's a resolution. That is for the monthly charge for water by increasing 14.
I understand.
All right, the other one is it was ordinance that we did on the water availability fee, which does not have the automatic resolution provision.
And I understand the difference. But what I'm saying is, in order to be consistent with the gentleman that we've hired to be able to bring this dead up to within the 100 day that he's asked us to do, he's given us three options. Three increases for water usage fee. One is $16, one's $14, and one's $9, okay? And then three options for water availability. One's 50, one's 100, and one's 160. Well, if we, let's say for example, we were to choose $14 tonight. You got me?
That's to lock in to the 100.
Then that locks us into the 100.
Correct.
You see what I mean?
Yeah.
So until we've had time to discuss what we are going to do on third reading of the increased water availability fee, why shouldn't we just table this until that night to do them both at the same time? You understand what I'm saying? Wouldn't that make more logical sense?
My job is not logic. Not like, that's your job to be like. If that's your motion, make it if it's...
No, I'm just, I mean, I just think that makes sense. To me, it does.
Do a motion to postpone until after third reading or during, or during third reading of ordinance number blah blah blah. Postponing, table, table means dead after next meeting if you don't do it.
I think what, the parliamentary motion would be to table the consideration of...
But the timing for the tabling, it has to be done the next day. And it's not going to be done. It'll only go in the second reading. So it would kill it the next time. Postponing, postponing will allow us more time. And we put a date on it or a timeframe on it.
So with that being said, I definitely agree that we need to wait until we do the third reading. So I would like to move that we...
I vote drumming.
He has a motion on the floor.
Motion. I would draw that motion in regard to the resolution.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to move that we take resolution number 202102 during the time that we do the third reading for the water availability fee.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. Motion is carried. Next order of business is resolution number 2021-03. A resolution authorizing Williamsburg County to enter into a contract with Design Dimension for services for a design, construction, and installation of exhibit and text material for exhibit in the African American Museum Annex. Mr. Billy, do you want to speak about that?
I do, thank you, ma'am.
As you're aware, there were two sets of grants for our local museum. First one was to rehabilitate the, what we call the annex building next door to the museum on Hampton Avenue. And the grant's purpose was to establish an African American museum annex. We got a total of $400,000. $200,000 Historical Society raised in cash. And it was matched by $200,000. That construction is complete. And will be complete in the next week or two. The second grant was 192,000 total with half of that money being contributed by the Historical Society. They had to raise the money and put it in account. And then it was matched by USDA Rural Development Grant. Totally different. That was for the interior exhibits, design, and preparation. Total of 192,000. That was bid, and the reason the county's doing it, the county is the sponsor for these grants. All of the money comes from the Historical Society and the grants. The grants have to be applied for by the county. And then the Historical Society is responsible to see that all of this is done correctly. Their money spent first. And all of this is done in conjunction with Ms. Latonya Parker, the grants directed with the county. And so she actually handles the money and the work. We went through the procurement process and had three or four companies bid on this project. And after, and they were very close. All of them were outstanding companies. And we determined, the committee I should say, determined and recommended to the county. And the county was, the committee was composed of staff of the Williamsburg County Government and the Historical Society. Decided that the design dimension of Wilson, North Carolina, was best one to submit it. And I'll tell you, all four of them were just, the three of them were just as tight as they could be. We felt like that, and I say we, I was on the committee because I'm also Secretary of the Historical Society. We're two hats. We decided design dimensions was a smaller group. They do everything in their shop. They don't contract it out, subcontract it out. And to give you an idea, they did the Sumter Museum. And they, of course, they do a lot of, but specialize in what we call smaller museum projects like this. The staff does all their work. They really do a lot of hands-on and do real exhibits, not pictures and show and tell. We're going to have actual touchscreen TVs where you go in and touch it. For example, one of the touchscreen TVs is going to be Dr. Martin Luther King's May 1966 speech. You touch it and you watch it. Or it may be others. Today, we were working on an exhibit. We've uncovered a significant amount of material of African American soldiers in World War I. There were so many of them, we are concentrating the exhibit on those that served abroad and are buried. A lot of them are buried. I don't know, Williamsburg County veterans were buried in France. And we've got lots of things that were uncovered. And just to give you an example, last week, one of our guys worked on something and found, a fellow by the name of McKnight, who was a soldier, and his obituary was in the county record. And his name was Earl. And I immediately called our former vice chairman, Andy McKnight. I said, "Andy, you kind of this guy?" He said, "Tell me about him." And I started reading the obituary. He said, "Oh, my God, I think that's some of my family." And I told him where he was buried. I said, "You know where that cemetery is?" He said, "No." He said, "But I know that's where some of my family is, but I don't even know where it is." The next day, we found his gravestone and a cemetery. So that's the kind of things that we're uncovering and working on. We're going to specialize in. We want to know the story of African American soldiers in World War I, World War II, Korea, and be able to put on and have on display. All of this is going to be under exhibits. And we felt design dimension, I'll quit giving you war stories because I've got too many to tell. Design dimension was the right fit for us. We were very impressed with the Betsy Resko, who is the CEO of it. She's only like 30 years old, but she's got a master's or PhD in this kind of work. And the work that they have done is just really impressive. And we're delighted to recommend that we enter into this contract. It's not going to cost the county a dime. All the work is being done by the society. All the research is being done. Go around and look at, we're going to have a grand opening. But if you want to see this building, it's really significant because the Historical Society and our museum has become a major stopping point for tourists coming in. We actually get busloads on occasion. They want to see Thorn Tree. They want to see the museum. So it's really making a big impact. And so that's an overall report. But that's our recommendation, and I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkinson. With the pleasure of council?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving resolution number 2021-03, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Our next resolution, next order of business is resolution number 2021-04. A resolution requested by the Williamsburg County Department of A&amp;D Alcohol Drug Abuse to change their name to Williamsburg County Behavioral Health. Ms. Wright, the executive director, is in the facility today. Ms. Wright, if you'd like to come up and give council some information. And be advised, you have two minutes.
Hello. I am Lesley Wright, the Director at Williamsburg County Department on Alcohol and Drug Abuse. We are, a little bit of history behind this. We are one of the three agencies left in South Carolina that is still utilizing the name, I mean, Department of Alcohol and Drug Abuse. Stigmas are definitely associated with the name. It stops people from coming into services. It also impacts our marketing. We definitely need this name changed. Since the last year, we have had several people to get different licensures as well as certifications. This makes us available to do other services, such as your EAP services that we're doing for the county as well as MAT services, medication assisted treatment. So we're offering a scope of services that we're not representing in our name. And so we must make this, well, I'm hoping that you all will agree to it, to make this name change so we can get in line with the rest of the state and we can market ourselves. Because I'm all about rebranding now. So please support us in making this name change so that we can sell our services and we can offer more to the community. Thank you. And I don't think I took too...
Thank you. What is, so this is, again, this is the resolution 2021-04. We need approval for council and a motion for approval of resolution 2021-04.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of resolution number 2021-04, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. You have your name changed. Our next order of business is our boards and commissions. I understand that you all were able to get some work done, but perhaps not everything. But I just wanted council to go ahead and present your information as far as your boards and commissions of those who actually have the information. I know it's taken some time to get and to gather it. So, you know, for those of you who actually have some of your information today, that's wonderful. Those of you who don't, it's okay too. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
I have one. Make a motion for Ms. Sandra Cades for the library.
Anyone else?
I have my names, but I don't have my forms yet.
That's fine. You can go ahead and state their names and just get us the form so we can at least put it on, have it on record.
Okay. For the fire board, Don Coker.
You talking to your mind? I can't hear you.
Be in the microphone. Oh. Cut it off.
Hit the button.
Cut it off. I turned it off. For the fire board, Don Coker.
Okay.
For the Williamsburg County Behavioral Health, Abraham Dorsey. For the library, Maurice McBride. Now, there are some that I did not bother to change.
Okay.
Because I have not talked to them.
Okay.
And for the... Oh, capital project sales tax commission, Naomi Dorsey.
You got it all? So it was placed in a motion and...
Madam Supervisor, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know I asked this before. It's just slipped my mind. The people that we asked to be a part of these boards, do they have to live in our district?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So for everyone that's watching, you don't live in District 5. I'm coming for you.
Yes, and I think written that they have to be in your district.
Okay.
So we have a motion to appoint these individuals from Councilman Lemon and Councilman Miller. We need a second? Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the appointees, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. They are now officially appointed. Our new business, we have, I don't see her here. All right. Under the supervisor's report. For those of you who are unaware, and hopefully this will get us some time out in the network so people will understand what we're looking for. We are shopping for a new financial and payroll software. For many years, this has been a concern for not only our auditor, our financial advisors, as well as the users. We finally are positioning ourselves to be able to upgrade the county's system. So I'm excited about that opportunity. The other system, as you all know, we've faced many challenges with it. So I'm very pleased to know that we're positioning, we're ready to do and make a move to change over this system. Currently, we're spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on the current system, which is limiting our proficiency and our ability to work efficiently in county government. My plan for the county is to go 80% paperless by July 1st, 2021, and to create some additional cost savings at the county by getting a new system. Let's see. We are also looking for a qualified chief of finance, CFO. As you all know, Elizabeth Nelson will be retiring June 30th. And we are in the market of looking for a new financial CFO. We are seeking a CPA that has the ability to become a GFO certified by the state of South Carolina within one year of appointment. Our next order is vaccinations. Williamsburg County Regional Hospital, as well as MUSC, will be doing a vaccine operation on March 5th, 2021. And obviously, it's open to 1A and 65 and older. Registration is underway. The county has opened a hotline to assist citizens in registration. That hotline number is 843-355-8970. So citizens can call in and we can help you with the registration process. I do know that we still have a few appointments left for that date. Last I checked, midday today. So if you are interested and you do need help, we will register you in. Again, that event will take place at the King Street Recreation Facility located on Nelson Boulevard from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. You must register. Another vaccine operation in which the county is teaming up with MUSC will be held at the J.J. Mitchum Community Center, March 11th. Again, that's at the J.J. Mitchum Facility Community Center. So we are, have not, they have not put that date yet on the site for you to register for, but we are coming to that area in partnership with MUSC to do vaccines. March 12th, City Rec, again, located on Nelson Boulevard and King Street, another vaccination operation being done. Again, those things have not been posted, but in order for you to be able to get vaccine, we're asking that you must be registered. Also, just to give a little history on that, for those who do not want to get the vaccine in Williamsburg County from the start of this event up until the 27th of February... in Williamsburg County, from the start of this event up until the 27th of February, we had nine COVID related, 91 COVID-related deaths in Williamsburg County. 275 hospitalized and a total of 3,808 confirmed cases in Williamsburg County. So please, continue to take the necessary precautions you need to take so that you can be safe out there.
Madam Supervisor, what was that number again?
Which one? Telephone number, hotline? We are putting together our advertisement for the hashtag "Let's Talk" to where I will be visiting each community virtually. I am also inviting council members to attend those virtual meetings with me. A schedule will be put out, and I don't think it has yet, I don't think it hit yet, but the schedule, it is in the packets. Okay, the schedule is in your packets to hopefully give you an opportunity to sign on and listen to what the citizens in your respective districts have to say. So those meetings will be held, again, like I said, virtually, and your schedule has been placed in your packets.
Dr. Wright, I have a question in reference to this vaccination. I notice, I don't know what avenue they go about to do this, but some counties, you don't need to register, you just show up and you reg, you vote, you show up and not vote, huh? You show up and you register there, no appointment necessary, just go ahead and get your shot. Now, we could find out what's the procedure to do that. I think it would help us get more people to actually get the vaccinations. Now, I know Bamber County is one county that I know they got some spots you just drive up, show your ID and so forth, and you get your shots. But we have to go online and register a lot of old people, they're not going to want to, they're apprehensive about doing that. If we had someplace where you just drive up, get your shot and go on with your business, I think it would help us out a lot as far as getting people to actually get the vaccination.
Right now, currently, we have two providers, which is DHEC and MUSC, and that's the way their rules work. So until we get someone else that may come in, private or other, that may be able to supply those, then that may be an option for them. But mostly, what we're doing is trying to make sure that we actually have enough because I can imagine, we ran out, we were six short. So I can imagine that if you just let people show up, that it would be a logistical issue. But I'm sure that we'll have something coming along similar to that operation. I just don't know who and when.
Yeah.
Next, again, like we stated earlier, those things are supply driven. We are still looking for nurses to assist us on the March 11th date at J.J. Mitchum. They can give an instruction on how they can get ahold of me to get that information down. We do have three nurses that confirmed, and then we are also trying to work with a, one of our local colleges to help with the supplying enough nurses for the event. So I think that's about it for me. We need a motion to go into executive session in accordance to Section 304.70A, Discussion of Personnel Matters Concerning Employee Layoff Retirement and Cost Savings. Need a second.
Before we go into executive, can I just say one thing, Dr. Wright? Just want to give a big congratulations to Mr. John McKnight. He and a team of about 25 people are going around the county picking up litter. I think they've been in Mr. Miller's district and they were also in your district. Mr. Woods, this Saturday, they're going to be in District Five. So stay tuned to the Facebook page, the Sue Ham Facebook page will be posting where and when you can meet us for that, for that project. Thank you.
We need a motion, we have a motion already, we need a second for executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of moving to executive session, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, opposers, the same. Motion is carried, we're going into an executive session. We need a motion to return to regular session?